I'm calling the Committee on Fiscal Affairs to order. The first item of business is the approval of our minutes from the meeting of April 6, 2015. I'll move the adoption of calendar item 1A.
Second.
We have a second. Are there any questions, changes, comments? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have numerous action items, so I'll start off. Action item, item number one of the policy calendar is a resolution requesting that the university adopt a schedule of academic excellence fees for students in certain graduate-level programs at Queens College effective with the fall 2015 semester. Revenue from the proposed fees will be returned directly to the respective programs. The selected programs will remain very affordable in comparison to other programs in the metropolitan area. The college will continue to administer financial aid to assist students with the completion of their studies. The proposed programs are, for the Aaron Copland School of Music, the Masters in Music, Masters of Arts, Masters of Science degrees, Advanced Certificate Programs in Musical Performance and Music Education. The proposed fees will be $150 per semester for students enrolled in one to five credits and $300 per semester for students enrolled in six or more credits. In the Department of Economics, the Master of Science Degree in Risk Management has a proposed fee of $500 per student per academic semester. In the Department of Linguistics and Communication Disorders, the MA in Applied Linguistics, the Master of Science in Education, Post-Masters Advanced Certificate in TSAL, Advanced Certificate in English Language Teaching, Post-Masters Program in TSAL and Bilingual Education, Master of Arts in Speech Language Pathology. The proposed fees for the Masters in Speech Language Pathology will be $500 per semester for full-time and part-time students. All other programs will be $25 per credit for full-time and part-time students. In the Department of Psychology, the Advanced Certificate in Applied Behavioral Analysis, the proposed fee is $150 per semester for full and part-time students. And in the Department of Sociology, the Masters of Arts in Data Analytics and Applied Social Research Master's Program, the proposed fees are, full-time and part-time students, $50 per graduate credit hour, up to a maximum of $1,500 per student. I move the approval of action item one of the policy calendar.
Second.
Item's been seconded. Questions? Matthew? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is a resolution calling for the approval of academic excellence fees at John Jay College of Criminal Justice. The excellence fees will allow the college to successfully compete for highly-prepared students in this increasingly competitive market. Moreover, it will permit the college to provide a level of support, student-seek, and a rigorous plan of study which will both include the student's academic achievements and further accomplishment of their career goals. The proposed programs are, the MA program in Forensic Psychology, the MA program in Forensic Mental Health Counseling, Postgraduate Certificate in Forensic Psychology, and the Master's JD Dual Degree Program with New York Law School. Proposed fee, a semester increase of $125 for every three credits for a maximum of $500 for a full-time course load of 12 credits. I move the approval of action item number two of the policy calendar.
Second.
Item's been seconded. Any questions?
I'm just concerned about the language it says. I don't understand. It says, "to allow the college to successfully compete for highly-prepared students." Are they saying that? I don't understand that.
Well, I think the college feels that part of the resources that'll go back into the program will be to help recruit students into these programs.
These are highly-technical programs that require the additional costs necessary for what's needed in the forensic work, and other schools seem to have it, and this is just to get them up so that we can be competitive.
And the MA JD Dual Degree Program that they have at New York Law School is fairly new. I think in the year 2011, 2012, that came onboard. But again, as with the Queens College academic fees and as with the other academic fees that we've approved, that the trustees have approved over the years, all of the funds for these will go directly back into the programs.
I just took exception to the criminology, compete for highly-prepared students. I think you're competing for good students.
Okay. We could strike that from the formal resolution that will appear before the board later in the month.
Thank you.
That'd be great. The item is on the table. It's been motioned and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item in the policy calendar is a resolution stating that in order to maintain and strengthen the quality of Brooklyn College's music instructions, the university authorizes establishing a fee for private music lessons. It is quite common at other institutions for both public and private schools to charge an extra fee for private lessons. The proposed fee would be applied for the following programs: private lessons in music performance, MM private lessons for music performance, Advanced Certificate in Music Performance Private Lessons, Advanced Diploma in Music Performance Private Lessons. The proposed fee, $250 fee to be added to each registration. I move the approval of action item number three of the policy calendar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any questions? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item four is a resolution of the City University that will allow the City University to adopt a revised schedule of material fees for students in the full-time and Part IX Juris Doctor Programs at the City University of New York School of Law effective with the fall 2015 semester. The CUNY Law School currently charges all students a materials fee that includes the cost of textbooks which are purchased and distributed by the school. Effective in fall of 2015, the school will be eliminating its bookstore and partnering with an online textbook retailer, allowing students the freedom to select and purchase textbooks on their own, as the school will no longer require materials fee revenue to support textbook distributions. The proposed fee schedule reflects the remaining expenses currently covered by the materials fee, including the cost of one-time expenses such as printing diplomas and recurring expenses such as student copy card allocation each semester. The proposed changes to the fee schedule are contained in the resolution, and if you see in the resolution, many of the fees, if not all of them, are going down because they're no longer requiring them. I'll move this motion.
Second.
Any questions?
What's the nature of the partnering arrangement going forward?
I think this is a great example of colleges learning from best practices from other campuses. So, John Jay College, this year, eliminated their physical bookstore, and John Jay entered into an agreement with a partner organization called Acadimos to be the online bookstore provider to its students. So, it's a pretty radical change getting into your online bookstore, but the folks from John Jay, both the administrative side and faculty students, have all given very positive feedback to that change. It's helped the students in terms of having a larger network from where to buy their books, helping them direct them to various places where they can purchase them online, and overall helping them save money in terms of what they're paying for the textbook. So, CUNY School of Law's not picked up on that. They'd like to enter into a similar partnership, and historically, the law school has always charged $700 to its students and then has purchased the textbooks and given them to the students. So now, by being able to partner with this outside organization, they're reducing the fee significantly, and again, students will have a greater network from which to buy textbooks from. So, we think this is a terrific thing, and we're hoping that law school will be as successful as John Jay, and that maybe some of the other campuses will follow suit.
Have they selected the provider or the format in which the students will be able to buy it?
They have, and it's the same firm that John Jay's using, Acadimos.
And in each of those cases, John Jay on the one hand and the law school on the other, what utilization of the space that they're now going to get back that used to be a bookstore is being made?
John Jay has utilized the space for other academic programming. The law school, they didn't have a physical bookstore. They purchased the books for the students and then gave it to them. So, there's not that same facility savings that John Jay had, but overall, it's a great benefit to the students.
Thank you.
We've done this at the NYU School of Medicine. There is no longer a bookstore. There are no longer textbooks. Everything's on a tablet.
So, I assume the cost of books, if they were $700 per semester, physical, that the new arrangement is equal to or less than $700?
Yeah, their expectation is that this will, at the end of each term, will actually save the students money.
So, I assume we'll have a report back to tell us whether that assumption became a reality?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is a resolution requesting that the Board of Trustees of the university authorize the general counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the university for the purchase and delivery of computer-based remedial tests. The initial term shall be three years with a two-one-year options for the university to renew in its best interest. Such services shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $1,215,000. The university requires these tests to assess college readiness of post-high-school-level students to determine the student's level of proficiency in reading, writing, and mathematics. I'll move this item, number five.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? In the past, we've done this on an annual basis, I believe, and this is recurring again.
We've had annual contracts, well, I should say multi-year agreements. The last agreement is expiring. We put this out to market. We had two vendors who replied. We haven't notified the vendors of who was selected, but we have selected a vendor. So, we're ready to move forward on this one.
About how many tests do we purchase? I mean, how many students? What's the cost per test of this million, too?
The cost per unit here is $2 per exam per student. So, we actually have an increase in the overall costs of this contract. The annual cost is going to be about $243,000. In the previous contract, it was about $170,000, so it's a little less than $65,000 increase. But, one of the benefits that we're going to get from this new agreement is that this is all going to be web-based. The prior exam was all a Windows-based platform. This is all going to be web-based, and so, there'll be dashboards that folks in our testing office here at Central at the colleges can use to monitor the exams, who's taking them, what their scores have been. So, we think we'll get much better functionality out of this new contract.
And do all incoming students take this test?
It depends on their SAT score and their region scores. So, not all of them take it, but it depends on where they fall.
Lower certain cutoff, all students to enroll take this test.
Correct.
And you have to take it before you can get out? Is this the one?
Before you get in.
Get in.
This is what you get in?
This is to determine if you have remedial needs.
Okay. How about the one where you have to take to the test that you have to pass to prove that you are out of, if you have to take, if you've been declared that you have to take remediation, there's another test that you have to take to get out?
Yeah. I believe that's different. I don't believe that's included in this bundle. Is that correct, David?
Correct.
This is not an admissions test. This is you've been admitted to a school.
Right. Correct. And this is to determine if you have remedial needs.
Right. Okay.
And do we expect to use a similar kind of program for the one, because I heard there was a lot of discussion about that test to get out of remediation?
I'm going to ask our university dean, David Crook, to help us on that one. This is on exit from remediation, David. Trustee deals it.
We've been developing our own homegrown test to determine readiness to exit, so we have a common departmental test in mathematics. We're developing one in reading that we hope to field in the fall, and writing, we've always had our own test. So, we've been gradually, as we develop these new tests, been saving the university money from having to buy commercial tests.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The item has been seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is a resolution requesting that the Board of Trustees of the university authorize the general counsel to execute a contract on behalf of LaGuardia Community College to purchase and replace existing variable air volume devices part of the building's HVAC system. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $1 million. The new system will lead to an estimated annual cost savings of $122,662 arising from electricity conserved and significant reduction in wear and tear of the equipment and the need for repair and replacement. I move the approval of action item number six of this policy calendar.
Second.
Item's been seconded. Any questions or comments? I wish we had the air conditioning here. Item seven is a resolution. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item seven is a resolution requesting that the Board of Trustees of the university hereby accept a gift of approximately $1.5 million from the estate of Joseph Shore for the benefit of students at the McCauley Honors College whose home campus is Queens College or City College. Dr. Joseph M. Shore was a City College alumnus, was a biochemist, and a former executive of Forest Laboratories. His family's connections to the university run deep. He is the late husband of Dr. Laura Shore, who was the founding dean of the McCauley Honors College and former provost of Hunter College. In addition, Dr. Shore's first wife, Sandra Shore, was an alumna and honored faculty member of Queens College. Commemorating the dedication and commitment of the family to City University of New York, this gift will support the Opportunities Fund for McCauley Honors College students on the campuses of Queens College and City College. I move the approval of action item number seven of the policy calendar.
Second.
Any questions?
Who invests these funds and who administers these funds?
It'll be through McCauley Honors College, but the gift specifies that it's to be split evenly for students, for McCauley Honors College students at Queens College and at City College, but it'll be administered through McCauley.
So, McCauley has a fund that they do the investment in themselves, or it's part of our common fund?
These funds will be, they'll be going through McCauley. I'm not sure whether they're going to be going through our investment pool at this point. Something we'll have to determine.
So, we accept this generous gift and then we let it go?
Right.
Yes.
These are, you know, this is.
One of many.
Right. In terms of what happens with the foundations, we certainly encourage funds to go through our investment pool, but it's up to the individual foundation to determine that.
Just curious why they are going through the, these generally go through FSA. Is there a reason that they're going directly to the NACs? Is there?
There was no naming. It's just a gift.
Any further questions? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The policy item number eight is a resolution requesting that the Board of Trustees of the university accept a gift of $1 million from the Anthony E. Meyer Family Foundation in support of the Opportunities Fund at McCauley's Honors College. In recognition of this generous gift, the college will establish the Meyer Scholars Fund. Anthony Meyer is an entrepreneur, private investor, and philanthropist. He is the president of Ocean Road Advisors and chairman of Meter &amp; Company LLC. He currently serves as the vice chairman of the McCauley's Honors College Foundation Board and leads its development committee. He is also named as an entrepreneur in residence. Commemorating the dedication and commitment of Mr. Meyer and his family to the City University, this gift will support the co-curricular activities provided through the Opportunities Fund for McCauley Honors College students. I move the approval of action item number eight of the policy calendar.
Second.
Item's been seconded.
Same question, I assume, same answer.
Yeah, same answer.
I just, I don't have a question, but I do think it's important to note here that while the Fiscal Affairs Committee quite appropriately is concerned, quite appropriately concerned about the investment and the management of these very generous gifts, no one who either is watching this or is reading the minutes of this should mistake that quite appropriate concern in any way as diminishing our very deep appreciation for these very generous gifts.
So noted. The item's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, I call on Vice Chancellor Sapienza to give us a presentation on the fiscal year 16 city executive budget.
Thanks, Chair Loden. Again, hello, everyone. Couple of weeks ago, the mayor issued his executive budget proposal for fiscal 16. You've all been given copies of an analysis that we put together on the executive budget and its impact on CUNY, so I'm just going to go through some of the highlights of that analysis over the next couple of minutes. So, in fiscal 16, the city executive budget provides $286.5 million for our community colleges, which is a net increase year to year of $14.8 million, about a 5.4% increase in overall city support to the community colleges. And I'll go through some of the large changes that are contained within that $14.8 million. The first one is the largest one, which is the STEM Support Expansion, $10.3 million. These are funds that the mayor had put in last year's executive budget. The mayor had provided $19 million for various initiatives in the fiscal 15 executive budget. That grows to $29 million in fiscal 16, and then grows to $51 million in fiscal 17 in the out-years. The majority of it is for expansion of the ASAP program. We're going to be growing that to about 7,100 students for next year, and so that's $10.3 million. Other items that are included in that $14.8, CUNY Start is also expanding. We received $1.5 million for that program to do a math component of CUNY Start. I think you're all familiar with CUNY Start. It was created to help students with remedial needs. The students only pay $75 a semester. They don't need to use up their financial aid while they're in CUNY Start. We've had terrific results from the program in terms of getting students out of remediation. By far, the area that students need remediation in the most is math, and so, the goal here is to help students specifically with math to have an intensive summer component to help students get out of math remediation. We're also pleased that the mayor has provided $1 million next year for students at Gutman Community Colleges to receive free metro cards. Students in the ASAP program receive metro cards. Gutman Community College was modeled after the ASAP program, and so, they made a pitch that their students should receive metro cards as well, and again, we're very grateful to the city for putting up that funding for next year, and that funding is baseline for the out-years as well. The Fatherhood Academy is a program at LaGuardia Community College that the mayor funded in his preliminary budget. Mayor liked it so much that he's actually adding another million dollars next year to expand the program to two additional community colleges. Those colleges haven't been selected yet, but we will be working with folks on our academic side, Student Services, and the colleges to determine who will get those two awards for next year. Pension-infringed benefit increase, $5.5 million. Very grateful that these mandatory costs have been included in next year's budget, and I'll add that this $5.5 million grows significantly in the city's five-year financial plan going out to fiscal 19. So, the city has made a real commitment to funding pension-infringed benefit costs going forward. And there's a slight reduction for energy. There were some efficiency savings that the mayor asked all agencies to participate in. The bulk of hours are going to come from energy savings at our campuses, and the revenue from the $300 increase that is going to be taking effect in fall 2015 is part of our five-year plan. That was recognized in the city's financial plan, $24.2 million. So, if you see the chart on the bottom of the first page, you see that overall, with the state aid that was included in the state adopted budget, with the city's support and with the tuition revenue, our community college is going to have an overall increase of $48 million in next year's budget, which is a 5.7% increase. So, we're really pleased to see those numbers going in the right direction. On the next page, page two, some of the other programs that were included in the budget. CUNY Prep, this is a program that we've had for many years now. It's been part of the budget dance with the city every year, that the city council has funded it and only funded it on a one-year basis. We keep having to go back every year and ask for that money. Well, now, the city has put that money in the base budget, so $2.7 million is in the city's financial plan permanently. The Apple Core Program, Academic Preparation for Law Enforcement Core at John Jay, this is a program that John Jay is developing with the NYPD and the City Department of Ed to identify students who are interested in careers in law enforcement. $1.7 million is provided for that. There's also $1.1 million for College Persistence to help, to use data to help students persist towards their degree in a more timely fashion. The John Jay Civic Justice Corps, again, a program that we've had for years that helps young people who are getting out of jail facilities and helping them get back into not only civic life, but in getting back into academic life. $1.4 million is funded. Paycheck Plus Program, $2.5 million is a program that was started this year. That's funded again for next year. And a couple of items from the Yale Initiative, teacher recruitment, to help young men of color go into the teaching profession, $300,000, and also to do $200,000 for outreach to young men of color to go into the ASAP program. So, a lot of good things contained in the mayor's executive budget. So, what's not in here? The biggest item that we are going to be discussing with the city council is the city council merit scholarships. In this year's budget, the council funded about $11 million for city council merit scholarships, which were modeled after the old Malone scholarships, which were defunded a few years ago. That $11 million was only put in on a one-time basis, so we need those funds to be put back next year, and we need an increase because now we're going to have a new cohort of students coming in. So, we're asking the council to fund $17 million in next year's budget for the council merit scholarships. That's our largest ask of the council as part of the adopted budget process. The chancellor testified in front of the council finance and higher-ed committees on Friday. Council, again, seems very supportive as they have been over the last several years, so look forward to working with them and the mayor's office on the adopted budget. We have some other items, in terms of the items that the council puts in every year, restorations for our centers and institutes. The big ask is going to be for the city council merit scholarships. A program that I want to add was initially put forth by our university student senate for funding, and council picked up on that call and put the funds in last year, so we're hoping for a similar result this year. So, that's where we are on the city side, and happy to take any questions or comments.
Okay. Capital?
Capital. The only items I'll mention on capital, two items. One is, we received $20 million in alum sum for community college critical maintenance funds. They'll put in the plan in fiscal year 2019, but we're really happy to see that because we've been very successful over the last several years in getting critical maintenance money for our senior colleges through the state budget, but we haven't really been receiving critical maintenance funds for community colleges. So, very encouraging that the city put that into its five-year plan. And then, the other major item was $41 million for infrastructure upgrades at LaGuardia's Center III Building, and that's critical because not only will it be new space, but it's going to replace existing rental space that the college currently has. So, those were the two big changes on capital.
Okay. There being no further business for this committee, we now move to the subcommittee on audit.
Thank you. I call to order the meeting of the subcommittee on audit. We have two action items and an information item. The first action item is approval of the minutes of our meeting of February 2, 2015. I move approval. I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First information items, the following information items, the engagement letter and the fiscal 2015 audit plan are for the subcommittee's information and discussion. I now call on our team from KPMG to give a presentation on the proposed audit scope.
Great, thanks, Ben. So with me today is Jason Spiegel, who is a senior manager from KPMG, who will be assisting me again this year with all of the deliverables, and Benny Hadnot from Watson Rice, who is our client service partner, working on with the relationship with the subcontracting for all of the audit services as well. So there were a few pieces of information that were provided to you in advance of today's meeting. The PowerPoint presentation, which summarizes our audit plan, the detailed audit plan, which includes all of our procedures, as well as a draft of our engagement letter. So I'm only planning on reviewing with you today the audit plan in the PowerPoint presentation. All right, so moving on to slide two, we have the Client Service Team organizational chart, and most of these individuals are the same as you saw last year as well. So I continue as the lead engagement audit partner, and to remind the committee, this is my last year that I will be serving as engagement partner. We introduced the new engagement partner to management at a planning meeting that we had in April, and she will be joining me again through the course of the audit, and will be meeting with this committee in November when we meet for the final results. Jason and Maggie continue as the audit managers, and Dave Gagnon continues as the concurring review partner. He performs a second partner review on all the deliverables that we issue for the university. And Sherry, she is the Watson Rice manager. She is my day-to-day contact for all administrative and staffing needs with respect to the Watson Rice staff. And you can see that we have KPMG senior associates and associates, and Watson Rice senior associates and associates, who assist and work underneath our senior associate during the course of the summer and the fall work. I think I covered a lot of what's on slides three and four already with our roles. So I will move to slide five for the objective of an audit, which has not changed from prior years. Our primary objective is to issue an audit opinion that states that your financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And we do this, we plan and perform procedures over the balances within the financial statements, as well as review management estimates and judgments, judgments, and look at the overall presentation of the financial statements as well. On slides six, seven, and eight are the responsibilities for the three groups of individuals that are responsible for the audit process. These are management, this committee, and KPMG. These have not changed significantly from prior year and are included in the engagement letter. So I'm not going to review these in any detail, except on slide eight, under KPMG responsibilities. I did want to note that we do conduct the audit in accordance with professional standards, which for these audits include auditing standards that are generally accepted in the United States, as well as the standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards. And that is because we do also issue an opinion on your schedule of federal awards. Slide nine includes an overview of our audit approach and methodology. Currently, today was the first day of our campus visits, so we did start out at two of the colleges today. We have spent the better part of the last few months meeting internally with our team, performing risk assessment procedures, meeting with management to finalize our audit approach. And today begins our summer work, and Jason will speak a little bit more about that. And then we return and work at the central office and perform all of the testing procedures in September and October. And then we will meet back with you in early November to complete the completion procedures.
When you, when you mentioned on page nine identifying significant risks, are you speaking to strictly the financial control risks, or are you looking at risks in a more general sense?
Financial statement risks.
Thank you.
On slide 10, we have laid out the scope of work. So there are four deliverables, and these are the same as last year. However, I did want to point out bullet point number three is our report on the university's federal awards, and we do know that we will have two major programs. So we are gonna be testing for student financial assistance, which we always test, it is always gonna be a major program at the university. And also this year, we are testing the FEMA program for additional hurricane Sandy claims that were, continued to be expended during fiscal 15. We did test this program in fiscal 12 as it first came up with Hurricane Irene, and it's back on the three-year cycle, so we will be looking at that program as well. And then slide 11, a little bit on materiality.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, before you go on to 11, on 10, you mentioned looking at the financial statements for the university as a whole and for the senior colleges.
Yes.
What about the community colleges?
No, there's no requirement for us to separately report on the community colleges. We report on the senior colleges, because the state of New York records them as a component, and they require that we have an audit at that level of materiality, so they can rely on our audit opinion. But New York does not get consolidated in that same manner.
Even though you visit BMCC Bronx Community, Kingsville?
Yeah, they do not request anything from our audit at that level of materiality, which is why we don't do it.
I thought you might get to it, but I haven't heard. What's the purpose of engaging the subcontractor Watson Rice?
So that was a state requirement in the last contract that we signed, which began last year. So there's a 20 percent state requirement that we use a minority or a women-based firm.
And what responsibility will Watson Rice have?
So they have a senior associate and an associate that work underneath our senior associate and perform the audit work with KPMJ.
So they work hand-in-hand with you, is that it?
And they're supervised by a KPMG senior and our managers and myself.
Thank you.
Okay, so back on materiality, and this actually does tie in, I wanted to talk a little bit about the different reports. We do look at materiality at the financial statement level, all the way down to the procedures that we perform, and if there's an audit posting threshold, we look at materiality. We are looking at materiality at the university level for, if you remember, university has two columns on the face of their balance sheet and their statement of changes, for university only and for all of the auxiliary entities. And we do have separate levels of materiality for each of those columns, because there are actually separate opinions within our major opinion. And we also do look at separate materialities for the senior colleges. So since we do a CARBAT report for the senior college only, we do set a lower level of materiality at that level as well. And overall, our materiality, we consider something to be material if there's an error that would change the views of users of the financial statements.
As you look at the audit and you work your way through the various procedures, should you find issues? I assume the level of materiality declines.
It does, especially if we start with the control work and we have control issues. We do have different levels of test work that we have to perform in relation to a failed control, but yes.
So if you found something at the community colleges, because you do visit them, although you don't have to present a formal quote audit.
Right.
What would you do with that information?
That information flows through the university's financial statements. It's just, we don't have a separate CARBAT report for that. So any errors or misstatements that we would find that relates to the community colleges, and we would report those to management, and they would record those like they have in the past.
The community colleges are audited. They're, but the separate financial statement for just the seniors that get incorporated into the state's financial statement.
Yeah, they're still, everything is still audited, and it's just consolidated in CUNY. It's just the senior colleges has a separate CARBAT report for the state.
Thank you for that.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Jason now on slide 12.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Shelley had alluded to the timeline for the 2015 audit already, so I'm not gonna spend too much time on slide 12, but just wanted to reiterate that, again, the timeline is similar to the prior year, and we will be conducting our interim procedures now through approximately mid-August with the campus visits, as well as the interim control testing and A-133 testing, and then be back in the fall for our final testing, and be ready to report to you in November on the results of that audit. And then going forward from there, we will be issuing our management letter, as well as finalizing our A-133 procedures in, at the end of this year, as the page turns for calendar year 16 as well, too, and be ready to issue that before the March 31st deadline as well. On slide 13 and 14 are our slides related to the college visits. We plan to visit with the Office of the University Controller, as well as eight colleges, and each year, a college is visited at least once every three years, based on rotation requirements, changes in management, or results from previous audits. And the eight colleges that we have selected for this year, based on those rotational requirements and other discussions with management, are listed here for you. And these are the college visits that we will do during the July through, I mean, sorry, the June through August timeframe as well. But on slide 14, during those college visits, we review the following areas of operations. There are five main areas, student continuum, financial management, facilities management, human resources management, and information technology. There are certain controls, key controls, that we will test at the colleges to make sure that they are both designed and operating effectively. And in terms of student continuum, there are procedures that we will do to test the compliance requirements over the student financial aid federal program cluster, and report on any findings or any type of exceptions or audit adjustments that we may note at those visits through an exit interview that we will have with each college at the end of the visit, so that when the time comes to compile the management letter, everyone is on the same page, and we will have responses to those, those comments well in advance, so that we can issue the management letter on time.
With regard to the eight colleges selected, I assume they are all based on, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm assuming they're all based on rotational requirements or changes in management, and not the results of previous visits?
Six out of these eight were up for rotation.
Yeah. And the other two were changes in management.
Thank you.
On slide 15, just to reiterate again, the responsibilities of the consideration of fraud in the financial statement audit. The auditor does not have a responsibility to find fraud, but it does have a responsibility to consider it in the performance of our procedures. So we identify fraud risks at both the financial statement level, as well if there's any pervasive fraud risks, and also develop a response to those identified fraud risks, either through the design and the operating effectiveness of anti-fraud controls. We'll test those anti-fraud controls, as well as address any pervasive fraud risks surrounding revenue recognition or management override of controls. We'll evaluate such audit evidence from the substantive procedures that we do perform, and then we have a requirement to communicate to management and the audit subcommittee if we do note any instances of fraud or illegal misconduct.
I have a question. I don't quite know what it means with no obligation to find fraud, but you're sort of looking for it. What does that mean?
So our procedures are designed to...
Detect material misstatements.
Material misstatements, right. So our, our level of, the design of the procedures is not down to the level where we would find an immaterial instance of fraud, or an immaterial instance of error or misappropriation of assets. It will be at the level of materiality that is designed at the financial statement level and the financial statement assertion level.
So if there was a material misstatement that was a result of fraud or error, our audit procedures would, would capture and find those.
If, if we were engaged to perform some type of forensics audit, where that was the, the scope of the audit was to, you know, perform procedures to detect fraud or any lack of controls or anything that would be anti-fraud related, that would be the scope of those procedures, and we'd report on that.
Okay, I understand the distinction, thank you.
Okay. On slide 16, just to continue for the risk assessment of fraud, as I mentioned earlier, there are two pervasive fraud risks that surround revenue recognition, as well as management override of controls. These could be journal entries and adjustments, any controls over the significant accounting estimates and the development of those estimates, as well as any significant unusual transactions. And we will perform certain procedures over those pervasive risks, such as cutoff of revenue, to make sure that revenue is being reported in the proper period, as well as journal entry test work over post-closing or topside entries that get from the university's general ledger to the issued financial statements, so that there are no instances of any management override of controls over that process. Okay, on slide 17, it's a little busy slide here, but we do have our auditing and accounting areas that we consider to be significant, where we spend the focus of our time and energies. The significant audit areas and estimates have not changed since the prior year, and our discussions with management to this date have not indicated any change otherwise. There is a significant implementation of GASB standards this year, that I'll go over in a little bit later slide. And then also, just in terms of information technology matters, we do have our IT team come in to perform certain inquiry procedures and test of design procedures over certain information technology general controls, such as over system access, change management, program management, and just make sure that there are no changes in those policies from the previous year, or if there were, does management have a process in place to ensure that those controls would still be designed properly?
So our audit plan does include the specific procedures we perform over the two left-hand columns. So our significant audit areas and significant estimates, the detailed procedures are included in another document.
On slide 18, just a continuation of those procedures, just to highlight two areas I think are important, is that at the end of the audit, we do perform an analytical review of the amounts year over year, to make sure that they are either consistent or comparable with the prior year amounts, and make sure that they are appropriately classified in the right categories of either, you know, operating versus non-operating, and so on and so forth. And also, on the fourth bullet there, our tax senior manager, Jocelyn Miller, does come in to perform our required tax review of the university's tax exempt status, as well as any conclusions, if there are any uncertain tax positions that come about during the course of our auditing procedures.
Have we found any in the past?
I mean, do we have any?
No.
No.
So we have no tax reserves or anything like that? State tax?
And you're not required to.
Fin 48.
No Fin 48.
On slide 19, in terms of independence regarding non-audit services or any other relationships that may reasonably be brought to bear on our independence, there are none to report to you. In our professional judgment, we are independent with respect to the university and its affiliates, as that term is defined by the professional standards. And KPMG does maintain a comprehensive system of quality controls designed to maintain our independence, which are included in these bullets here. But before we start the engagement, we do go through a rigorous process to determine that we are independent and maintain our independence throughout the course of the Any questions on, on the audit plan and the procedures and the timeline? Let's move on to the next section.
Just, just one, one question. Back on, I guess, the more extensive document outlining the, the plan under responsibilities to communicate with the audit subcommittee, where would a change in accounting policies show up? I mean, if, if we change accounting policies on a treatment for something, would, would that filter through the audit committee, and filter through you, and then back to the audit committee?
It is definitely something that we talked to management about during our audit meeting, planning meeting, whether or not there were any changes in, in policies or practices. If there were something material in nature, that we would definitely be bringing that to you at our conclusion meeting in November.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next section, just for an accounting and regulatory update, on slide 21 and 22, just wanted to go over some new accounting and regulatory matters that are going to impact the university's 2015 financial statements. The first matters on slide 21 are GASB statements number 68 and 71, related to the accounting and financial reporting of pensions. This, you may remember, was the accounting standard that we have been talking about for a couple of years now, about the changes to the employer's side of the reporting for the plan pension benefits, the expense side of, of, of those benefits, as well as any net pension liability or asset that the plan has calculated through its, through its actuaries. But the objective of that statement is to improve the accounting and financial reporting of an employer's plan, of employer's financial statements, to include, to include those elements of those pension plan amounts, as well as establishing measures for recognizing those elements in the financial statements, as well as the disclosure of those amounts and the calculation and the actuarial methods used to determine those amounts as well, too. So as you know, the university is an employer of the New York City Teachers Retirement System and Employers Retirement System. So those plans for fiscal year 15 have developed a schedule of employer allocations, as well as a schedule of pension amounts that will be given, or has been given over to the university, which they will record as an opening adjustment to their net position as of July 1, 2014. And, you know, and... And, you know, and as we go through the, the procedures with management and the journal entries, we will be reporting back to you those amounts, and then you will see them reflected in the financial statements, as well as a footnote. There will be a footnote this year in those financial statements that speak to the adoption of the accounting standards, as well as the amounts of the restated net position as of the beginning of the year balances. Those coincide with the measurement date of, of the plans themselves, as well as any roll forward of those amounts through the university's year-end.
But we don't pick up any contingent liability?
Yes.
Because these are defined benefit pla, defined contribution plans?
No, they're actually defined benefit.
Those two are defined benefit.
Jason just said a lot of stuff. There are going to be some very large liabilities that you will be picking up this year.
But they'll be matched by an equivalent amount of assets sitting on the book of TIAA craft.
Well, it's netted, but the net is a li, is a very large liability.
It's, it's netted at the plan level, and then you get either the net pension liability or the asset, depending on the funding status of those plans.
The contribution, the contribution is made each year. So what are we doing? Present valuing the future contributions?
Well, the contributions are based on an actuarial calculation, but the liability goes out, you know, as far as the mortality tables tell you to take it out, and the liability, the overall plan is in a liability position. And you will be picking up your share of the liability for the employees, the university's employees that are in those plans. The plan had to adopt these new standards last year, and the employers pick up the GASB 68 standard this year.
So I thought that this was trying to define that, quote, unfunded liability in state and local governments. And I'm confused, if we are funding our liability, then we need to understand-
But the overall liability is in an unfunded position.
Right. The state, the state and city are funding the liabilities. The state and city provide-
It's guaranteed under the state constitution.
You're not-
Guaranteed in the state constitution, but it isn't a liability.
What, what pension plans are we talking about here? There's lots of pension plans.
ERS and-
Yeah, ERS and ERS.
Retirement system and city teachers, not TIAA.
Thank you.
ERS and ERS.
Right. Thank you. Sorry. Back.
It's a state and city.
No.
And city.
Well, this is just-
It's a university responsibility that the state and city pick up.
Yes. But this is just, we're, we're members of the city plan, so it's the teachers and the ERS and ERS plans, and we get from the city a report that comes from their auditor that shows the net liability, and what is our portion of that net liability, but we are not contributing any money to it, other than what they come back on the actuarial calculation to say, this is what your share is, and it's for the senior colleges. So in, that money comes from the state.
But this in no way impacts anyone who's make, who's retirement is being paid by TIAA craft or any of the other fund-
No.
TIAA.
Correct. That is correct.
No, but the city retiree, actuary retired this year.
Because of the adoption of these new standards?
Correlation.
He retired at the end of October.
I know that was a lot of information, but if, if you have any questions or, and, and to further with the adoption of GASB 68, will be GASB 71. This is really just a transitional statement, I would say, where there was a flaw in the initial writing of GASB 68, where there were timing differences between the time when contributions were made for the current year versus when the measurement date was for the plan, that those had to be recorded as either a deferred inflow or deferred outflow of resources in the employer's financial statements. So 2015 contributions that CUNY makes to the plans will be, will be shown as a deferred outflow of resources, and will be amortized as a portion of that pension expense going forward. And, and to wrap up the regulatory update, this year is the first year where the new uniform guidance for federal awards comes into play. It's for, it's guidance that affects all federal awards or funding increments that have been provided after December 26th of 2014. And the one point I just want to make here is that while the audit requirements under the new uniform guidance are not effective until the next fiscal year, the university will have to provide us a listing of any awards that they have, that they have received or funding increments that they have received pre-uniform guidance, as well as post-uniform guidance, so that we can determine that the appropriate procedures to be performed that the OMB, federal OMB will provide in their compliance supplement, which is due to be out, I think, within the next month or so. And that compliance supplement is basically the Bible, if you will, for what we do and develop our procedures over for those federal awards.
The bulk of our federal awards sit on the research foundation and are audited there. The only two that, as Shelley pointed out earlier in the conversation, are financial aid, which is a very large number, as well as FEMA, because we still have FEMA monies that are coming through from Superstorm Sandy. And this is the third year where we did not have to have a special audit, but this time around, they will make some selections and take a look at that. And so we'll have to see whether these were prior year's awards that we're now seeing the completion of, or whether they are incremental changes that would make the change in this, in the, applying the uniform guidance.
All right. Yeah, that concludes our remarks, and the rest of what's in the PowerPoint is for your reading platform.
Before, before we return to the action items, I'd simply like the committee to thank the, the KPMG team, even though my personal confidence in KPMG has been shaken by the fact that our relationship partner has apparently had some exposure to the sun recently, which is totally inconsistent with the profession. So, we'll now return-
I didn't realize.
We'll now return to the action items of the agenda. Action item number one of the policy calendar calls for the approval of the audit scope as presented by KPMG, and to authorize the Vice Chancellor for Budget and Finance to sign the engagement letter for the audit of the CUNY financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2015. I move the approval of action item number one of the policy calendar.
Second.
Any discussion?
Questions, Mr. Chairman? With regard to the engagement letter, are there any highlights by way of change this year versus last year that you'd like to bring to our attention?
It's very consistent.
And what about the fee? How does the 625?
Same fee, and it's consistent with the contract. So we do have a three-year contract, and we're in the second year of that, and that was part of the, the contract.
And does that fee include the services of Watson Rice?
It does.
Thank you.
For the audit, there is, there will be a separate engagement letter for the tax work, and we will actually have two engagement letters for that, one for Watson Rice's portion of it, and then one for the KPMG piece. And they help, they assist us with the 990T that we are required to file. Because we're a government agency, we don't have to file the normal Form 990.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know I should know the answer to this, but I can't recall, does this audit include the audit of the individual colleges' foundations in this portion?
They roll, they roll up into the consolidated financial statements, but we are relying on their audit, their own auditors' audit opinions. So we're not re-auditing the foundations.
They have to go out and get independent auditors to audit their, their financial statements.
I'm not used to seeing an audit fee under seven figures.
Please, not none of the auditors. Trustee Beals, I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? It passes. That, with no more items on the agenda for the subcommittee on audit, we return to the Committee on Fiscal Affairs.
There being no items for the Committee on Fiscal Affairs, I'll let it hang a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.